Okay, I call to order, this is a joint meeting of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors and Frederick County Public Schools Board members. We've also invited our citizen members of our Finance Committee. You might have other people supporting you as well, but this is a meeting between us, so they won't ask questions unless we have questions for them. This is a presentation of Dr. Hummer's Superintendent's Budget. It is not yet adopted by the School Board, so it is a gracious act on his part to offer us an early briefing and an early opportunity to ask questions of what he's proposed to his board. Again, greatly appreciated that communication. I would say to the Supervisors, no questions are off the board. We can hit them with any question we want after he's finished presenting. However, if there's anything that's too challenging or uncertain today, we have other avenues. There's other future meetings I'm sure we can set up, or through email. I might push some things off if we get stuck to resolve later. And then I'd like to welcome the School Board, several members of which are new, and hand it over to Chairman Surtik.
Thank you Chairman Ludwig. It's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you so much for allowing us to come down and participate this evening. We need from the Board, I have, need a motion for Diana Huber-Klein to join us remotely from Richmond. If someone on the Board would like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to allow Ms. Diana Huber-Klein to join the electronic room for this meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been properly seconded for Ms. Diana Huber-Klein to join us remotely from Richmond. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Secondly, we have an agenda before us. Would someone like to make a motion on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Adams.
I'd like to adopt the, uh, the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made to approve the agenda and has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this meeting being video recorded? Is there a reason that it wasn't planned to be video recorded?
So, we're in the process of obtaining the equipment to video. We're in the process of obtaining equipment to video record all our meetings, but generally we have not recorded, video recorded our work sessions.
Okay. I just want to express my dissent on the fact that there is no video recording. I think that this does nothing to aid in transparency to the public. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I have the motion approved and duly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Diana, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. In answer to that comment, I agree with you. I would like to video record more of our meetings. I've always held that to be the case, and we are currently looking at our options for doing that. I believe we streamed our regular meetings before you did, but then you jumped us, jumped past us, hopscotched us, and you recorded much more of your meetings than we did. So congratulations, I actually congratulate you on that. Dr. Hummer, you have a presentation to give. I'll give you the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank both of our Boards for allowing us to do this. As Mr. Chair of the Board of Supervisors has mentioned, this was my proposed budget, which is called a Needs-Based Budget, which I'm going to get into that and define that a little bit more clear for everybody. And our School Board is going to be reviewing all of this information through some Finance Committee meetings, and then they will be approving this on February 20th. And they will be approving that after we have reviewed all of the information that we have presented, as well as getting feedback from you as well. So I want to make sure that that is very clear. And this was intentional, to set this up early, and I just am very, very appreciative of both of our Boards for allowing us to do this. So looking forward to the conversation this evening. As Mr. Ludwig has mentioned, please hold your questions till the end. However, if there's a point of clarification on one of the slides, please stop me and just say, can you clarify that? Let's hold all the questions till the end, and then also to Mr. Ludwig's point, if there is a question that we're not able to answer, we'll take it down, and then we'll respond to you as we've been doing. And please continue to send your questions along, and as you've seen, we've been responding in a timely fashion. We want to make sure that we're answering all the questions that you have, so that we can move forward with being fully informed in regards to what we're trying to do for our students and our school division. So, thanks again to both of our Boards. So, here's just a quick agenda for what we're going to be discussing today. We're going to provide a quick overview of our FCPS budget. What goes into that? All of the components of what's driving this, and just giving you all just a little bit more of a deeper dive into our budget, which is addressed, as you all know, every year. Then we're going to dive into our Needs-Based Budget. We're going to talk about FY '25 in regards to what our current needs are, in regards to what my proposal was for our School Board to take into consideration, and we're going to review that a little bit more deeper, and of course, answer any questions you have. And then we're going to talk about timelines and next steps, which we kind of talked about here a little bit already, but we'll dive into that a little bit more as well. So if you are not aware, we are the largest employer in Frederick County. You're probably thinking, well, wait a minute, the hospital probably is larger than us. Well, the hospital's technically in Winchester. So, we are the largest employer in Frederick County. We have over 2,500 staff, and we are the 19th largest division in Virginia. Virginia has a lot of smaller divisions, so you think 19, wow, okay, that's 14,000 students, and there's some other divisions that are larger than us, but 19 out of 132? I think that puts things into perspective, and we need to keep that in mind moving forward. Just a little rough background, we oversee and manage 13 funds. That is about a third of a billion dollars. So this is a large business that we run and operate, and there's a lot of funds that we oversee. So we are going to be talking about three specific funds in regards to our budget proposal, but as, we want to make sure that we are very clear, that there are numerous funds that we oversee, and we keep track of on a regular basis. So there is an obligation, this is in the Virginia Constitution, as well as in state code, that to fund a public school system, it's funded through three, and if you talk about the other, which I'll get to in a second, but there's three main revenue sources to fund a school division. It's the state, it's federal, and it's the locality. And then the other is going to be other grants, or other opportunities for us to receive additional revenue. But as you can see, that number is not very large, because there's not a lot of those opportunities, but we are always trying to find other ways to find additional dollars to fund things that are happening on a regular basis in our school division. The federal dollars is definitely going to fluctuate because of the different dollars that come forward through different things that happen throughout our society, such as the ESSER dollars that came forward. So that number is probably going to fluctuate a little bit more, but the main dollars that we receive is going to be from the state and the locality, which again, is required by the Virginia Constitution and the state code. So of our operating dollars, as you can see, 72% of that is through, is for instruction. That is where all of our, most, the majority of our dollars go, and then operations, maintenance, pupil, transportation, technology, and other, is where the rest of our operating dollars are placed. And of that, 81% is for staff. 19% is everything else. Resources, materials, all of the things that go into our operating budget. So the majority of our budget is for our people and our staff that instruct and support our students. Every year, we always get a lot of questions about this, and we appreciate these questions. We look at a 30-mile radius in regards to comparing ourselves to other school divisions, because that's typically where we will lose teachers to. Now, yes, there are other school divisions that are the same size as us throughout the Commonwealth, which we look at and essentially assess to see how, where they compare to us, but we have to remember, there's different parts of the Commonwealth where there's different funding streams that they might receive. So it's not that we don't look at those, those other school divisions, and if there are other school divisions you would like for us to take a look at, we're more than happy to do that, but these are the school divisions that we typically compete against. We also receive, if you recall, if you were at the meeting last year, we always received questions about West Virginia. Well, what about West Virginia? Well, we don't compete with West Virginia, because thankfully, we actually pay more than West Virginia. So we don't lose teachers very regularly to West Virginia, unless there's some sort of family matter, or if they're, they're from West Virginia, what have you, but we typically do not lose teachers to West Virginia. And I also provided that, that answer to that question. We provided a chart and a breakdown in regards to what those neighboring divisions look like, but if there's more questions about that, more than happy to answer those. So here is a current breakdown in regards to those seven divisions, in regards to where we compare in regards to salaries. I'm going to break this down a little bit more in regards to averages. And one of the thing that, the things that really is highlighted here, and I want to draw everyone's attention to, is we used to be a little bit more competitive when we compared ourselves to other divisions, and these other divisions are catching up to us. Now, we might be saying, well, then, that's them, you know, we need to focus on Frederick County. Well, some reasons that our teachers are leaving is because of pay, and we want to make sure that we are addressing the needs of our students and working towards the goals that we have. So in order to do that, we have to make sure that we have the right staff in front of our students and working on a day-to-day to make Frederick County the best place to be. So that's one of the things that we have to keep an eye on, because as I will share with you in a couple of slides, we are falling behind when it comes to salaries when we pay our staff. Now here is a telling slide. So this is, this is Loudoun County. We do get questions in regards to looking at that, those seven school division averages, and how Loudoun County is going to be a lot further and potentially could skew that average. So we like to break that out to have further conversations about that. And typically, Loudoun County has been our biggest competitor, because a lot of our teachers do, when they leave, they go to Loudoun County. And as you can see here, if we do get the proposal that we are asking for, pay increases, that we, there still is a gap there. Now, we will never catch Loudoun County, but our goal is to compress that scale the best that we can, so that teachers are not leaving us to go to Loudoun County. If you're not familiar with the VRS system, which I know a lot of you are, well, it is the last three-year average when you retire. So what happens is, is teachers typically leave towards the end of their 30 years to go to Loudoun County to get that three-year average. And we have had staff who reported that to us to get that three-year. Now again, we can't compete with Loudoun County, but we can, we need to continue to do the things that we need to do to make Frederick County the best place to be, so we can keep our staff and continue to attract staff. Here is just a better, a breakdown of the averages that I mentioned two slides previously, and this just goes to show where we compare when it comes to that average, and as you can see, we are below that 30-mile average until you get up to that 30-, 35-year mark, which we are trying to fix, which I'll get to in a second. So again, I want to make sure that we are seeing that we are falling behind when it comes to comparing ourselves to that 30-mile average group. So something we need to keep in mind. As you could see, last year, one of our initiatives was we wanted to make sure we were increasing that starting salary, because that is where we want to attract teachers, bring those first-year teachers in. And if you take a look at this year, we are second to last. So the other divisions are paying their first-year teachers more, and this is something, again, that we want to make sure that we address, so that we're able to pay our teachers, to again, attract them, and to keep them as well, because this does impact the rest of our pay scale. Here's a further breakdown of comparison, again, to Loudoun County, when you take a look at a teacher at a bachelor's degree and their years of experience. And again, this is our competitor, that's the only reason why we're showing this. I know we cannot catch Loudoun County, I'm not suggesting that we match their salaries, that's not what I'm saying. All we're saying is, is that they are our competitor, and we want to work, we want to make sure that we are closing that gap, and we want to work at making sure that we are increasing our pay scales, so we can, we can come as close as we can to their salaries, because that is where we are losing our teachers. And here is just the difference at each of those levels in regards to pay. So as, as you can see, at that 20-year mark, there's a $28,000 difference between our 20-year teachers and their 20-year teachers, and that is where we are losing our teachers to them. So now let's take a look at the state level. And there has been a lot of talk in Richmond, if you keep up with all of the bills that are going through the General Assembly, this is something that has come up over the last couple of years. I pay a lot of attention to what's happening in Richmond, as I'm sure a lot of you do as well. And we, we have a lot of work to do at the state level, when it comes to how we are how we are paying and, and funding our public school system. And Virginia right now ranks 25th nationally, but we are 12th when it comes to the richest state in the county. There was a J-LAR study that came out a couple of months ago, and I strongly recommend that you take a look at that, it's on the BDOE website. And it really breaks this down a little bit further in regards to how Virginia has been lacking funding public education, specifically in regards to what's called a CAUPTool, which I'm sure my finance department behind me is probably having some funny faces back there, because the CAUPTool is, is very complicated. And essentially, what this CAUPTool does, is it funds school systems based on the number of students you have, which is very rare when you look at us compared to the rest of, of the nation. What the rest of the nation does is, is they fund your school system based on the needs of your students. So if you had 10,000 students, and 10,000 of them are typical developing, which is rare, those are the funds you receive. But if you have 10,000 students, and 5,000 are students who are English language learners, and 3,000 are students with disabilities, and 2,000 are typical developing students, you still get the same amount of money. So other states throughout the nation do not use that formula. They use the formula of Needs-Based, which is why we are taking a look at all of the needs of our students, because that is what is impacting our schools. And I know we've had a lot of conversations about, well, these classrooms are meant to have 25 students in them. We cannot function that way with the needs of some of our students that they bring, for students with disabilities, for English language learners, even for our CTE programs. We cannot have 25 students in those classes, so that is something that we are encouraging the state to continue to look at, because what that would do, if they did fix that, it means the state would be providing us more money, which means we would be requesting less money from the locality. And that is, I know, wishful thinking, but it is something that we're hopeful that Richmond will do, to hopefully get us what we need for our students. I think this goes to show you as well, in regards to falling behind the, the state average for how we pay our teachers. It's 1.2%, and that's, that's not okay. We need to do a better job as a state in regards to how we're funding public education. Our students, not only in Frederick County, but across the Commonwealth, and quite honestly, across the nation, they're our future, and we need to make sure that we are funding our future, and that we are investing in them, so that we're able to lead them to their goals, so that they can continue to lead, lead our communities and lead our nation. Because, if you take a look at a first-year teacher, and we broke this down, and I know there was a question in regards to where we received the, these dollar figure, and we put some links down there and references of where we received some of these dollars. Keep in mind, these are just averages, we wanted to get a good idea of what a teacher has to pay. And, and as you can see, if they have to pay all their bills, they're, they're in the negative. And what happens is, we have teachers that have second jobs, we have teachers that have to take out loans, that they don't have a hard time, a hard time paying off, so there's definitely some impact here that we need to draw some additional attention to. I was in a, in a meeting at the state level, and they said that there's been a lot of conversations about, a lot of our teachers are actually below that Fair Labor Act requirement as well. And this isn't just Frederick County, this is across the Virginia. That's a problem, which means that our teachers are having a hard time making a living, let alone our classified staff, which I'm going to get to here in a second. So we, we have some work to do. So for our classified staff, that is our bus drivers, our instructional assistants, our administrative assistants, as you can see, we are falling behind comparing ourselves to, to other school divisions. The other piece that we are recognizing, which has been happening here recently, is we are losing our classified staff to retail. Chick-fil-A, Target, Sheets. So we, we, when these staff leave us, they're making more money at these retail stores. Mr. Adam, yes?
What do you mean by classified, please?
Yes, thank you. So classified, thank you, is our bus driver, it's just a category. So we have licensed staff, and we have classified staff. Classified staff are our bus drivers, nutritional staff, custodians, instructional aides. Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. Anyway, so, so we are not only competing against other school divisions, we are competing against retail. And retail is great, this is no knock on retail, but we have to be able to keep our staff in our school system, because every representative in our school system, all 2,500 staff members, mean something to our school division, and they are what make our school division function. I know we spend a lot of time talking about teachers, but we have other staff that we need to also put at the forefront of making sure we are compensating them and providing them incentives, so they stay in Frederick County. So as you can see, our bus drivers, we are below. Our nutritional managers, nutritional staff, we are below there as well. Our instructional assistants, so those are our staff that help and support our classrooms in regards to supporting our younger grades, as well as our classrooms of students with disabilities. So we're faring in, in the minimum rate, but as you move up the scale, as you can see, we're falling behind there. So we also received a question about LCI. That was a really good question, because that is something that we, we also receive at the state level. And what the LCI is, is that what, that is what determines how much the locality is, is expected to pay. And how that is calculated, is they take a look at the true value of real property, they take a look at that gross income, that adjusted gross, gross income, and then taxable retail sale. And again, we have nothing to do with how that is calculated, that is provided by the state, and it determines how we receive our funding from them, as well as the locality. So as you can see, over the last 10 years, in Frederick County, the LCI number for Frederick County has gone up, which means the state pay goes down. And what that means is, is that based on the calculations they've utilized, it's showing that, as, as it says up there, Frederick County is getting richer, meaning that the state is going to be providing less dollars. And again, that is the formula they utilize, and it is what they've determined in regards to what localities have to pay. And every school division is different, because every formula, or the formula is the same, but every division is different, as you can imagine. So here's just an example, a breakdown. So for a teacher who costs $50,000, the local share is 20,000, and then the state share is 29,000. So just wanted to show you that breakdown there. All right, you know, I always like to start off and brag on our students, right? And I love this picture, because this was, this was one of our, our first grade classes, and just, our students do such an amazing job, and that is why we do what we do, and I never want to lose that focus in making sure that we get the right staff in front of our students every day, and supporting them the best that we can. And that, right there, this picture right here, yes, there's a state code, it's a Needs-Based Budget, yes, there's a process, but this is what a Needs-Based Budget, Needs-Based Budget is all about. It's about our kids, and that is number one. So a Needs-Based Budget starts off with establishing School Board budget priorities. And we established these in the first half of the year, we had a meeting back in October, and then our School Board adopted these as their own in December. And we take a look at where we currently are as a school division, and determine what our needs need to be. So we looked at instructional initiatives, we looked at compensation packages, and then we looked at our current assets for operational funding. One of the other aspects of this is, we want to do a better job of thinking down the road. So there is going to be some aspects of this budget, which I will break down for you, that is going to come in phases, because there's no way that we would be able to fund some of these initiatives in one year, so we want to break these out and work towards these to a three- to five-year plan, which I will show you here in a second as we go through that. The other aspect that we utilize, and most school divisions utilize, is what's called a strategic plan. Our strategic plan expires in FY '25, so we're going to be working on developing a new one here, here very shortly, but this strategic plan focuses on these four areas: student success, culture, strategic partnerships, and high-quality staff. So we take a look at each of these components, we make sure that we are working towards the goals that have been established and been approved by our School Board, and that we want to make sure that we are able to fund those initiatives, because if we want to continue to promise for progress, we have to invest in that. As well as some of the key points that, that I'm also working on, which is definitely student performance, also taking a look at making sure we have some very good structured standard operating procedures in place for our students, as well as looking at building that culture within our schools and our community, and making sure that all of us are responsive, and being customer service first, and doing what's best for all of our students. That's something that I take a lot of pride in, and something that I'm working on regularly. So with all of that, this Needs-Based Budget is not completed in isolation. There's a lot of work that goes into this. We spend a lot of time with principals, we spend a lot of time with our parents, we spend a lot of time taking a look at our data, looking at our projections, looking at our enrollments. We meet with every single principal, we work with our team here in Central Office, to see what are our needs in regards to, as I mentioned, Needs-Based Budget to meet the needs of our students. And then here is just a little breakdown, so, so again, it's not something that happens in a month, it's not something that happens in two months, this is a nine-month process in order to determine what our needs are, putting together a budget, so that we can continue to meet our goals and move our school division forward in an appropriate fashion. There are also some state codes that drive our budget. So there's a state code that drives my Needs-Based Budget, it's defined in state code. There's also a state code in regards to, we have to submit a budget to the locality by April 1st, and I'm sure you all are aware that you have some, some state codes that you have to abide by as well. So the reason I like to share this slide here is, this isn't something that we've just made up. This isn't something that we just randomly put together, that we are required by law to put these items together, and we are required by law to make sure that we abide by these So now I'm going to brag on Frederick County Public Schools just a little bit, if that's okay. We have a lot of great things happening in Frederick County, a lot of great things. We have 21 school sites. As you can see there, we have numerous opportunities for students on both ends of the spectrum in regards to providing students CTE opportunities, advanced placement classes, as well as partnering with local universities, so students can actually graduate with an associate's degree, as well as the other end of the spectrum for students in need, such as students that require additional support, or students that require additional resources. It covers both ends of the spectrum, so that we're doing everything we can for all of our students. I want to draw your attention to two things down there at the bottom. I don't think you realize that we were a taxi service and a food service, right? We travel over 2.4 million miles a year. That's about over five years or 10 years. 2.4 million miles. And look at the meals that we serve. Yes, that's more than what Golden Corral serves in a year. So we are the number-one food supplier in Frederick County as well. That's a lot of meals right there. So there's a lot of work that goes into that, and there's staff that make sure that those things are happening in an efficient manner, so that again, we are transporting our students safely, and we are also feeding our students to make sure that they're ready to learn. We've also done a lot of different things in regards to addressing all of the great things that are happening, and making sure that we are recognizing those things. We're also doing things differently in regards to how we're meeting the needs of our students, and getting creative. Now, in some aspects, getting creative and innovative, sometimes that's, that costs money, but we like to do the things that are free, such as doing a transition day. So we started the school year off for all of our kindergartners, all of our sixth graders and all of our ninth graders, and we got resounding positive feedback, because it started the school year off for students that had no idea, coming into a new building, what it was like to walk through the halls as a middle schooler, or a high schooler. Giving them the building for a day made a difference, and it also made a difference for our parents as well. So for a lot of our kindergarten parents, they were able to walk their child to the door. When you're there every day, when there's a lot of traffic behind you, you can't do that on a regular basis, even though you want to, because you got to keep that line moving. So kindergarten, they were able to do that, so there was a lot of great things that we did there, and it didn't cost us any additional dollars to do that. So just making sure that we're recognizing all the great things that we're doing. Also, one of the things that I want to highlight is, there was one group that was, that was missing in regards to seeking feedback, and it was our students. So we started a student advisory committee, and I work with students on a regular basis to talk about what's happening in the schools, what are the things you'd like to see different, and a lot of the things are matching some of the things that we all say that we need to make some changes, and there's some other things of, I didn't think of that, that's something we need to look into. So we need to get feedback from our students, from our elementary, middle, and our high school students, so very, very excited about that. So with that being said, I want to make sure that we are very clear that we also have some work to do. There are great things happening in Frederick County, but there is also some things that we need to make sure that we work very, very hard at improving, and making sure that we are providing the best education for our students. So each of these three categories that I'm going to be speaking to you about, it's only three indicators of how we measure student success, so there are other things that we are looking at of how we're measuring the success of our students, but these are three really big things, and these are some main things that we have to work on. So if you take a look at one aspect, which is our SOL tests. Now, this is just an overall total average for all of our students, and I want, the reason I'm sharing that with you is because I, yes, we have work to do, and yes, we want these scores to be better, and yes, I'm not settling until we're first comparing ourselves to all of these seven school divisions, and that is a promise. But there are some successes when you break down our scores, and when you break down individual students at our schools, where they are making progress, where they are seeing gains in certain subject areas, and our principals are working very and our principals are working very hard through their, their continuous school improvement plans of highlighting those great things and highlighting the success that our student and, and our students and staff are making. So I want to make sure that we're very clear on that, that yes, if you look at this, it's very daunting, but there are also some great things going on and some gains that our, that our students are making. So this was 2021 and I put the ranking compared to our seven neighboring school divisions. Here's 21, 22, and here is, is last year, last year. And as you could see, we, we are definitely falling behind in the area of math and we are definitely falling behind in the area of reading. And those are the two main areas that we really like to focus on and we definitely have some work to do. Next up is chronic absenteeism. Now, I know we're first, but again, I don't want to celebrate because we're at 15%. So chronic absenteeism is when you miss more than 10 days within a given school year and we track that on a regular basis throughout the year. So these are our students that could be students that went to Disneyland for 10 days or these are our students that could be chronically absent because they have anxiety or don't like to come to school. So it covers the gambit there. So we are first, however, we have work to do there. So there is some additional things that we are doing in regards to getting our kids to school and, because that is where they're going to learn best. COVID didn't do us any favors here. I know that's the, the, you know, the taboo word we don't like to say, but that, that has impacted us and this is something that we are continuously getting better at and improving at. The other aspect is which I am, I'm focusing on a little bit more here recently is discipline in our schools. And as you could see, we have seen an influx as compared to 21, 22, 22, 23 in regards to the number of referrals. I think there's probably a lot of variables to this. Variables from overcrowding in our schools to getting the right staff in front of our, our students to making sure we're enforcing the code of conduct. I think there's a lot of aspects here, not pointing any fingers. One of the things that we are doing and we're going to be presenting this to our school board in the next month or so is we revamped our code of conduct to provide a more clear and concise code of conduct manual for our principals to follow so that they are able to be consistent. I think our current code of conduct kind of lended to some of that, that lack of enforcement. So this is something that we want to help our principals and make sure that we stay consistent on. So in order to address these things, we have to come up with solutions. So that there's going to be a bunch of other things we're going to work on there as well. So we broke this down for elementary, middle and high. And as you can see, we are seeing an increase in those referrals, so it is something that we are going to be addressing. All right, so with that being said, we are now going to dive into my needs-based budget and we're going to break this up into three categories, operating, debt service and capital projects. So one of my promises when I came on board is I wanted to make sure that we were being good stewards of our dollar. So I challenged my team to go through all of our line items and to determine if there was any line items that we could find some savings. And we found $485,000 through line items that were either not being spent or not being used. So that is going to be $485,000 less that we will be requesting from the locality. And this is something that we will continue to do and I want to make sure that we are showing that we are trying to be good stewards of our dollar and that we're using our money in an efficient manner. So that was one of the first things that we did in regards to, into being better fiscal managers of our budget. So before we jump into the operating, as I mentioned, I want to remind us that 81% of this operating budget is our people. And without our people, we have no education for our students. And as I mentioned, there is no one person that is more important than the other. All 2,500 of our staff mean something to us and are very important to us and are an integral part of our school division. So they are going to be captured in all of these pay scales that we're about to talk about because we need to keep staff and we need to attract staff. So here's just a quick summary, a breakdown of all of the average percent increases for our staff. We have 6.6 for teachers and classified, and I defined classified for you earlier and I can redefine that if you need me to. Other professionals, which is going to be our therapists, diagnosticians, psychologists, and then administrators and supervisors at that 3.2%. I want to make sure that we're very clear that no one of these people is more important than the other. Our administrators is just as important as our teachers, which is just as important as our bus drivers. But as I break this out, you will see why there is a difference between these pay scales because we definitely have some priorities in regards to how we're fixing some of these scales. So we started with a 3.2% pay increase with our, what's called a COLA, which is determined by the Social Security Administration. So that's not a number that we make up that comes out every year and that is the, the number that we started with. And we broke that down for each category for a step increase and then enhancing the scale. And that is where we came up with these dollar amounts for each of these categories. So we have teachers, classified, administrators, supervisors, as well as our other professionals, as I mentioned. We also wanted to provide additional pay increase for our classified staff because as I mentioned to you earlier, they're just as important as all of our other positions and we are starting to lose these amazing people to retail in the area and other school divisions. So we definitely want to make sure we stay competitive. So we wanted to make sure that we also gave them an additional pay increase to get to that 6.6% as we did with our teachers. Here's going to be one aspect of the phasing, as I mentioned to you earlier. So when you take a look at some of our pay scales, there's some clustering of those pay scales where if you are a seven-year teacher or a nine-year teacher, you're getting paid the same amount. We want to de-cluster that. And in order to do that, that's going to take about three to five years to do because if we were to uncluster our entire pay scale, it would cost us about $15 million. And we know that we should not be making that large of a request in one budget cycle, so we are going to break that out so that we can uncluster those pay scales. We also want to start our teachers out at 52,000. As I mentioned, we want to stay competitive, comparing ourselves to other school divisions around and we also want to attract new teachers. The other thing that we want to do, and this was done for two reasons. The first reason is, is we want to, again, honor the teachers that are dedicating themselves to this profession. So 25, and this is going to be a phase, we would like to get to that 15-year mark because remember when I showed you that, that pay scale comparing us to Loud and 15 years is where there's a significant pay increase. We're not going to catch that, but we want to do the best we can to catch it. So we're going to start with 25 and then we are going to, as future years come about, we are going to slowly get to that 15-year mark. So 25 years or more will be a $5,000 increase. We are also recognizing that we are finding that we have some positions that are hard to fill. Special ed, specialized general ed teachers. So we want to provide a $2,000 hard-to-fill position stipend. Now, this is something that I've always wanted us to do here in Frederick County, but I want to draw your attention to this, other divisions are also doing this as well. So I think this is something that we definitely want to get ahead of because again, we are going to be competing with other divisions, not only with salaries, but with other incentives that they're coming up with. We also wanted to increase the substitute rate because we have teachers that need to miss, just like everybody else. And we want to attract those substitutes for coming in and watching over that class. We can't just leave a class uncovered, so we want to be able to attract. And then we also have a bus driver shortage, so keeping the attendance bonus, but also increasing that so that we can keep our drivers and provide that additional incentive. Part of the Viennium, which as I'm sure you all know, the governor comes out with a Viennium every two years. And the first year of his new Viennium, there's a 1% bonus increase for all staff. So we would like to do that for all of our staff. That would be a one-time check for our, for our staff to receive. We're thinking November, December if this gets approved, but that's where that 1% bonus is coming from. And also to keep in mind, that, that does remind me, keep in mind, the governor did present his budget back in December, but the General Assembly still has to approve that. And there are rumors that typically, I don't think this last year was approved July or August, there are rumors that it will be done this April. So fingers crossed that happens, so there isn't any, any guessing games there. So hopefully that will be done so that we can move forward with, with that in regards to that appropriation. All right, something else that we did new this year, and again, this was done for many different reasons. The number one reason is, is to put a structure in place in regards to how we were staffing our schools in an appropriate manner. We wanted to make sure that we had a tool that we could utilize, which is based on the enrollment of students in the school building and then the number of staff that needs to service those students. And that could fluctuate every year. But again, we want to be good stewards of our, of our money and good stewards of our positions and we also want to make sure that we are being transparent in regards to where those positions are being placed. So we created these staffing standards, we sat down, we met with each of our principals and I want you to focus on this middle column here. And again, to show that we were trying, we were trying to be good stewards of our position and our dollar. So we met with each of our principals and it came out to 42 positions that were requested. And these are positions in schools in front of students. And we were able to take a look at the positions based on these staffing standards to say, you have some positions that you are below that staffing standard, so we can move those positions around. After you subtract those, we only are requesting those 25 FTE positions. Again, these are positions in front of students. So when you look at that 21, we found five positions elsewhere, so they only need 16 additional positions through the budget process. They're still getting 21 positions, but we are only requesting 16 through this upcoming budget process. Again, good stewards of our dollar. This is also going to be phased in because this is going to take time for us to meet these local staffing standards. And also too, at the state level, there's a lot of bills that are out there right now to fix this because the state only funds us based on a total SOQ, not meeting the specific needs of our students, as I mentioned to you earlier. And there are some bills on the floor to fix that, which as you know, is going to cost money. So we're hoping that does, that gets fixed, so there's less dollars that we are requesting from the locality. But in the meantime, we still have needs of students that we need to meet, so that's why we're where we're at today. The other thing is, is we're taking a look at how we're providing opportunities for our students. And there's many things that keep me up at night. You probably already heard me say this before because it's very genuine and it's from the heart. Is we had 60 students who didn't graduate last year. That's not okay, we need to do better. And, and some of those students probably could have graduated if we had an opportunity for them because some students worked during the day to raise a family. Some of them are young mothers. Some of them have other situations where they're just not able to come to school during the day and they're a couple of credits away from graduating. So what can we do to provide those opportunities for those students? So Mr. Thompson had a great idea of coming up with a night school. He has some other great ideas as well that we're working with him on and he is doing a fantastic job for our students and providing them those pathways and opportunities. So this is going to be one step to that, getting closer to meeting the needs of all of our students. And this is a, this is a starting point because there's some other ideas and initiatives that we're going to be looking at, but this is going to be one way to do that, to meet those students so that we can have zero students who weren't able to graduate. That is our goal. Next up, and this is another promise when I came on board, is that we will continue to focus on safety and security. And that is probably the number one thing that keeps me up at night because it just breaks my heart seeing some of the things that happen across our nation and we do not want to be a part of that or on the news if something like that happens. So we have hired a safety and security supervisor who is doing a fantastic job, works very closely with our amazing Frederick County Sheriff's Office and our SROs. And there are some things that he's identified that we need to work on. So these are some of them, of taking a look at intruder locks on our interior doors because they are very antiquated and we have some work to do there, as well as upgrading and installing cameras throughout our buildings. There's other things that we are also taking a look at, but these are just some highlights and again, a starting point for some of the things that we need to do. If there is any sort of high arching emergency things that we need to fix, of course, we are going to do that. These are things that we want to get ahead because this is the last thing that we want is something happened because we had a door that wasn't able to be locked. We do not want that to be, that to happen and we're going to prevent that from happening, do our best to do that. Next up is, we're going to add two replacement buses to our operating budget. Currently, we have six every year that we have built in, so this will increase us to two more. We do have a lot of buses that need to be replaced and this is just a breakdown of all those buses. So we have some work to do there, so this would be adding two additional buses to that operating budget for transportation. Here is, I know this has been, been causing and stirring a lot of questions and, and we appreciate all of those questions. This is called the community eligibility provision. So let me, let me back up really quick before I dive into CEP. So we have breakfast and lunch that is available to all students. And for students outside of the CEP that can't afford a lunch, they can apply through what's called free and reduced lunch, which they get paid for a breakfast or a lunch. If a student comes into school and for whatever reason they forgot their breakfast or their lunch or the family is, is prideful and doesn't want to fill out the application or whatever the reason is, if a student doesn't have a breakfast or a lunch, we provide it to them. Now, it does build up a debt. That debt gets to about $100, $150,000 every year, but we do not have students that go hungry. We provide them a meal, we know that they do not have a meal. Okay, I want to make sure that we're very clear on that. This is no way, shape or form, if this doesn't get approved or if we're not able to move forward this, because it is, it is a hefty brace debt, we acknowledge that. No way, shape or form is anybody saying, both sides, we're the supervisor of the school, we're saying we don't want to feed students. I want to make sure that we're very clear on that, okay? So with this CEP provision, there is a percentage that if a school division qualifies, they get reimbursement from the federal government. So right now, we have nine schools that qualify. And those nine schools qualify based on a 40% number. So if your students meet what's called an ISP number of 40%, you qualify and you get reimbursement. That reimbursement does not fully fund our nutrition. As you saw those funds when I first presented to you all the interim of this conversation, we have a nutrition fund. Those reimbursement dollars do not fully fund that nutrition fund. And as we continue to feed students, we're going to continue to need to replenish that fund. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're very clear on that. So the nine schools that we currently have, their students, not all the students in that school, even though that every student can eat, not every student takes advantage of this because some families do still pay for their child to eat breakfast and lunch. So what the CEP does is regardless if you're free and reduced and you go to one of those nine schools, you get a free breakfast and lunch if you desire and then we get reimbursement for that. But again, where we stand now, each of those schools isn't at 100% participation because not every family needs it. And I want to be very clear, so if we do move forward with this, it's not going to be all 14,000 of our students would be eating breakfast and lunch. The federal government just reduced this percentage from 40% to 25%. So as a county, we are roughly 43% free and reduced across the county. For this ISP number, which is a subcategory of this free and reduced number, which is very specific circumstances such as homeless or other situations, that percentage as a county, we're at 37%. So we meet that cutoff number as a county now. So if all of our, all of our schools, all 21 of our sites moved forward with this, we would have to, again, replenish that fund, $2.2 million. We would get reimbursement dollars back, but again, it would not, we would not be able to keep up with paying for the food and paying for the operating cost of keep moving forward with our nutritional department. And again, I know we received a lot of questions about this and we appreciate those questions. There are two bills right now, which I think one of them failed, if I'm not mistaken, but, but one of them is still alive, that they are looking at doing this statewide. But again, as we are having conversations, it is going to cost money. We do have students that, as I mentioned to you, that either don't fill out the application or have some other circumstance or situation that would benefit from this. And I think we are seeing that at our CEP schools because it's not at 100%. So this is a way for us to feed our students to make sure that they are ready to learn, breakfast and lunch. So with all that being said, as you can see, we've received, or currently proposed, received additional $10 million from the state. Don't be alarmed by the reduction of the federal, that's because our S or dollars, we're hitting a cliff with some of those dollars, that's why there's a deduction there. Also the fees and other charges, there, we saw a slight reduction there. And those fees and other charges could be, for example, when we rent our site out to a, a private person who wants to do wrestling or something of that nature or if there's other dollars that we might receive through some sort of insurance claim. So as you can see, that's a very small dollar amount, but it is dollars that we receive. So we are essentially asking for the operating fund, an additional $7.9 million from the locality. So a couple more slides really quickly. This is for our Indian Hollow and Jameswood High projects. As you can see, going from '24 to '25, there is an increase of $2.35 million. So that is an additional dollar amount that we will be requesting as well. And then our capital projects. So these are our assets that we currently have. As you can see, there are projects on here that have been on here for a couple of years now. So that is why this dollar amount went up. As you remember, last year was around $9 million. Well, our, our needs don't go away. I do want to take this time to, to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to use those additional state dollars to chisel away some of these projects and we greatly appreciate you allowing us to do that. But as you could see, there are still some other projects that we need to But as you can see, there are still some other projects that we need to address, and our current assets definitely need some work. So lastly, last portion of this presentation, we do have another school board budget work session on the 13th where we're going to talk through all of these items in regards to what the school board would like to see added, taken away. And then we are going to be, they will be adopting the budget, FY proposed, '25 proposed budget on February 20th at the school board meeting. And then I'll be coming back here, which I'm looking forward to, presenting their proposed budget to you all again on the 21st. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity. And then there's going to be additional meetings in March with hopes that the budget gets approved in April, which we will then turn around and approve that at our April meeting as well. I also encourage you and the public and anyone who's here who's listening to, please come out to town halls that I've scheduled. I did these last year, they were very successful. So I highly encourage you to do that. I also want to do a little plug if that's okay. We are going to try a virtual option for the second one. So we're going to do it live, but we're also going to livestream it as well, and people can type in their questions. So if a family has some things to take care of, like dinner and all the other great things we do as moms and dads, they can just listen in if they choose to do that. So we're going to see how that goes, and if it goes well, we'll continue to do that. So we're trying to meet every aspect of our community and they're able to contribute and participate. I want to give you all again a big thank you. I really appreciate this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to answering any and all questions that you have. So Mr. Chair, Mr. Ludwig.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. You and I and Chairman Surtivan talked just before the meeting, and we agreed unless either board strongly objects, that we'll take questions from one side and then the other supervisors first, since we're hearing this for the first time. If no one objects, we'll do it that way, but feel free to intersperse if you think we've gotten off track or you have a question that jumps on top of our question. This isn't strict, we want a free and open discussion here. So I will start with supervisors. Would anyone like to begin with any questions? Supervisor Dunn.
So first, I just want to get some clarification on some questions I asked, and I appreciate the answers. One of my questions was the total school staff outside of Frederick County, which is 43%. And then I asked outside of Virginia, which was another 17%. My question is, does that 43% represent the 17% or not? If you're not clear, then we can move off to that.
Let me make sure I'm answering your question correctly. When you sent the questions forward, you asked for total staff and then you asked for teachers. So...
So on total staff, I asked for...
The percent that lived outside of the county and the state.
Outside the county and the state.
Right.
When you said outside the county, does that include outside the state as well? I'm just asking because I don't know.
It does. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So therefore, you have basically 43% of the people, 43% of your staff that live outside of Frederick County, and of that, 17% live outside the state. On teachers, you have 17% outside the county and 9% outside the state. So I appreciate you getting your answers.
Yes, sir.
I looked through your budget, and I'd like to take and give you my perspective on some of those slides. So Mr. Ballhopper, can you pull up the... So Mr. Hummer, Dr. Hummer, I'd gone through that and I had a different perspective on some of your numbers, so I just want to share those.
Yes, sir.
This will take, you know, seven minutes or so. Does somebody have a clicker or... I don't mind you clicking if you want to. I trust you're clicking.
The right button there is how you go forward.
So here are the observations. In one of your slides, you show that in '23, we were third from the top, and then you said we were second from the bottom. To me, that was, it's an accurate comment, it's also a salesmanship comment. We're also third from the bottom. Falkir is also $50,000. So you could have put us third from the bottom versus second. It's just some small points that are irritants. That's comment number one. Teacher salary. Virginia likes 25th in national pay, but our tax rate, I believe, is possibly the same. So to some degree, that matches. Teachers are paid $0.57 for each dollar. When people go to school, different professions pay more. So if I go to school to become an artist, I'm probably not going to be paid the same amount of money as an engineer or somebody else. So just recognize that for people that go into the teaching profession, they know there's a certain compensation. If they want to get lots of money, they should probably become a neurosurgeon, make a million dollars a year. So that's just a thought. On Virginia ranks 12th as the richest state in county, and...
That's it, it's over.
That was a quick shot. Try this again. The richest, I'll go back here. Virginia ranks 12th as the richest state in the county, in the country. A better way to present that data would be, how does Frederick County rank? Because we have some of the wealthiest counties in the country. Fairfax is loud and next door to us. And so if you want to make a comparison on how Frederick County ranks, rather than do it on a statewide basis, we have 3,600 counties in the country. I'd say, how do we rank as a county, just as a different perspective? Again, same comment on county versus state. This is the slide that you had that showed if you make $50,000 a year, you're about $200 a month short. I've gone through those numbers and I'd like to make some revisions. The column on the left is the numbers that were on the previous slide showing the 197 negative. If you truly adjust that for both federal and state income tax, that adds another $283. And where does that number come from? It comes from here. Federal income tax of $50,000 minus the deduction of $14.6 gives taxable income of $35.4. The tax on that comes out to be $335 a month. Virginia income tax, same situation, gross pay minus the single status, that's the assumption. Your tax per month is $213. When you throw in the FICA tax of $318, your total is $868. Going back to that, that's a difference of over $283, but just having a correct tax breakdown actually on what would have thrown $50,000. The third column, other revised, highlighted in yellow, utilities and gas, cell phone, et cetera. Utilities and gas, that's $400 figure. In our household, our utilities and gas for two people were $290 a month. On cell phone, you can go to T-Mobile today and get cell phone plans for $60, and they're good cell phone plans. And if you are a teacher or an administrator, I know for teachers, they get a discount as well. So that's a number that I would say take a look at. For car insurance and renters insurance, you have both figures at 87, but for car insurance, I know you can get a $15,000, or car insurance is about for $35,000. For renters insurance, $50,000 liability is 35, and renters insurance is a little bit less. So making those revisions adds another $250. And then under other housemates, if that person living with somebody else, your rent numbers go down, your utilities go down, and the question then becomes the student loans. You're making the assumption that everybody has a student loan, but some people don't. And so that adds another $1,000. So my comment on this slide is that for the same $50,000, in my opinion realistically, someplace between $336 in the positive to $1,400 is probably the range for paying student loans, et cetera, but making those adjustments. So I'll show you those slides, you're welcome to tear them apart, but these are my read on your numbers. And I want to make some comment to you and your staff. This is not personal. And I said to the staff personally, this is just looking at numbers, seeing different things, so please do not take this personal, nor anybody here on the school staff. These are the numbers for the seven counties, the seven entities besides us in Virginia. As you can see, where Frederick County ranks, on year zero, we are seven, or year six. On year five, we're seven, four, and you can see how we go across. And the averages there say that for years zero and five, that is seven, being six and seven, a couple of years ago, we were in the three to four range. So it supports your comment that we've come down. By the same token, when you take a look at years 20, 25, 30, 35, we're in the three and four range, so we are offering, for those that stay, a much better salary than the average. So I'm just bringing these numbers out to you. When you add in the West Virginia counties, which you say you're not competing with, they are competing with us. I've heard people from Page County say, if you, Frederick County, would stop raising your salaries, we in Page County would not have to do the same. You also have people in West Virginia that are also looking to hire teachers, and if you're going to be hired in Berkeley or here, they're competing with us, same way we're competing for Loudon. So when you take a look at those numbers there, you can see that the averages are lower. And in that sense, we are someplace in the middle. We are six out of 13, seven out of 13, four out of 13, where it says SC rank of 13 going across. And when you take out Loudon, it's a little bit better, but it just gives you a different perspective. And before I move to the next slide, you've had a slide this year and previous years in which you say that Frederick County is less than the average. But outside of Loudon, each one of the others, Clark, Warren, et cetera, other than Falkir on two points, data points, is also below the average. So when you say we're below the average, if I were in Clark County, Clark County's below the average, Page is below the average, should I know Warren is too? So just, I'm just putting that as a point. This is an item that you had on school budgets hard to fill. For 25 years of experience and work, I recognize your ability to want us to do that, so I applaud you on that. You also have here, this is a multi-year initiative, so I'm going to give you a different thought on a multi-year initiative. And that would be one, to work with the General Assembly to say that if you go and work, instead of being paid for the highest three years, which is why people leave from here to Loudon, make it for the total time you're here. So if you work for 30 years, it's the average of your 30-year pay time, not just the top three. That's point number one. Point number two, if you also went and changed from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan, we essentially set up a 403B like private industry does, and say, fine, if you want to go retire, put money into your 403B, and we, this school, will match some percentage. That eliminates then the incentive to go and leave at the end of three years. I know that's not going to occur either, which I applaud, said, here's a multi-year thought process, and I'm going to give you another multi-year thought process that perhaps stems the tide of people moving to the richest county, the second richest now, Loudon County in the country, to stay here. So it's just thoughts which we can discuss some more. School buses. For the last eight years, I've heard we can't have money for school buses, and in the last few years, we have gone and improved that, which I appreciate. So now we're going to be up to eight. One of the things I did not know is what other vehicles were bought by the schools for transportation purposes. A constituent of mine said to me, Blaine, I was over at the school administration, and there's some 20 cars there, and they seem to be all school employee or school for the schools. That's generated the question to you on what occurred afterwards. That's why the question occurred. So when you look at that, here are some of them. So there's a Ford Explorer, and if you look on the right-hand side, staff travel, facilities, et cetera. My question on the staff travel issue is, is it important to go and have a vehicle, or can you have an employee who has to go on a legitimate staff travel be simply reimbursed for that travel? For example, if you, as the superintendent, have to go someplace, that's a legitimate travel, do you need your own car? You could have your own car, do it, and be reimbursed, or you could have your county car to go, and there's a cost analysis on that, and I don't know what those numbers are, but that's an issue. By the same token, I know that the schools do expect teachers to use their own vehicles to go to and back and forth to school, and for those that are teaching at multiple schools, they're expected to have their own car to go to multiple schools. So for example, a woman who is going to go teach English as a second language in five schools is expected to use her own car to make those travels, and there's no compensation and reimbursement for that travel. So that's my point on that. Toward the bottom, there's a construction truck. I don't know what it's for. Go ahead.
Mr. Ludwig, Mr. Chair, do you want me to wait for the presentation?
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Let me just finish.
Absolutely.
So there's this construction truck. There are some other items here on transportation, items here for facilities. On the second page, there was a tractor, John Deere tractor from Millbrook, third from the bottom. And then you had this. So over this timeframe, since 2017, it's about a $1.9 million total expense. $800,000 of that was for transportation related, which still leaves you a million dollars. And my question is, was that the best use of those expenses, work for those dollars that have been used for buses? I'm not saying right or wrong, but it's something that popped out at me when we were going through that. On school board budget initiative, the $2.10 million, this is a policy call. I don't think it's the responsibility of the taxpayer and the schools to feed children. We'll disagree on that. I think it's the responsibility of parents and families. If there are families that are truly destitute, there are other federal programs that can address that issue. But to provide free lunches for all students, I believe, is not the best use of tax dollars, and we will have a policy disagreement to agree to disagree. It's not my job to do that as a taxpayer. And if I have children, my job is to feed the children. If you, from your administrative perspective, are saying we have kids here that are coming hungry, let's work to find a federal program that's in existence already, WIP program, SNAP program, et cetera, will try to address that. But I just don't think that on a policy issue, we should do, and you, the school board, can make those calls on what you think is the best use of money. And finally, on the debt service. Each of the times that I've attended the Fall Debt Service Program, this is before your time as well, you have a chart which shows, here's where we are today, next year we need more amount, and then the numbers come down. What is missing on this chart, in my opinion, is this is a chart for the current expenditures. But then if you have another chart that shows what the expected future expenditures are and what that curve looks like, that curve, I suspect, is going to go and rise, not fall. So you have $19, $20 billion of more capital expenditures that you hope to get. If you put that into this situation, the curve changes. So I think that covers, you know, the points that I want to make. There are a couple other items of concern to me. One is, hang on. One is you are spending right now money on pre-K. Five years ago, it was a federal program, the start of the program, it was a small 20, 30 students. Now that has grown. There were two small studies that were done some time ago, showing that there was a positive influence between kindergarten and the third or fourth grade, but after that dissipated. Both Georgia and Florida have required pre-K studies, but they show no difference between, at 12th grade, between those that were in pre-K and not in pre-K. So my question is, is that the best expenditure of dollars? That's one comment on that issue. School administration. I've heard from a number of people that, and this is again, Dr. Hummer, prior to your being here, so I know you're new and it's not affected directly, that the school administration is top-heavy, both in your department and in the schools. So my comment to the school board members is, take a look at each high school, take a look at each middle school. Do all the high schools have the same number of principals, vice principals, et cetera? If they do, with the same number of students, that would make sense. If some have more, some have less, why do they or why do they not? But just take a look at the money that's going into administration, because that money could be used for teachers. And from Dr. Hummer's perspective, he's saying, this is what I even need, so I'm not saying that you don't, but it's something that I think you ought to have a good, hard look at going forward. So that's my comment on school administration. In the previous administration, you had two DEI instructors. I believe the total cost of those, the salaries are someplace in the neighborhood of $125. Total cost was probably $150 or more. That's $300,000. That's $300,000. From my perspective, I want kids to come out and learn, you know, math, science, et cetera. And I don't care if you're black or white, green or purple. The question I pose to you is, is a DEI person a good use of dollars versus putting the same dollars into teachers, which right now seem to have, you know, a request? So I would ask you to, you know, look at that and review that. I think the schools should emphasize merit. And then finally, we have overcrowding in Charando. And that overcrowding in Charando has been occurring since 1998. And I've said publicly, and I'll say again, I am all in favor of having a trailer at a high school if you're trying to build a wing and you do that for two or three or four years. But for 26 years? I wonder. So my comment to all of us here is, how do we solve that problem this year? And some options include building an addition at Millbrook, and you'd have to readjust, you know, high school lines. And does that solve the problem? I know that you have, Dr. Hummer, showing that in three, four, or five years, that doesn't solve the problem, but that's one option. Or do you make the assumption that you have more people going to homeschooling, which reduces the item? Or do you go and build an addition at Millbrook? Or do you build a fourth high school? But I think that this board and the school board and the administration need to come together and say, let's solve a problem in a realistic way, unless you think the policy position is just add more trailers. And that's not Blaine Dunn's position. So I think that collectively, you know, we need to address that. I think I've covered the points. If we go through and make an addition to address this random problem, there's going to be additional costs that was not in Dr. Hummer's slides, and the question is, how do we pay for that? So having said that, Dr. Hummer, I appreciate your presentation. Please take my comments as, look at the same numbers, saying, I'm looking at it from a different angle, same way to your staff, to you and the school board. I've laid out some concerns, and you know, how do we address them is up to you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So Dr. Hummer, before you start answering, I want to check on one thing. So we don't video record this meeting, we audio record many of our sessions. Are we audio recording this meeting?
Yes.
And we can make it available to Dr. Hummer, right? Is there any objection? Is there attorney or anyone about whether we? There was a lot there. And so if you can't answer all of it today, I'd like to be able to provide you with that.
And Dr. Hummer, just hang on for one second. I would like to go, and I'll support Mrs. White's comment on videoing transparency. I think that helps everybody here. I think it helps the public. So I'll just throw my support to her on that. Anything we can do, we'll do that. Having said that, Dr. Hummer, go ahead. And if you can't answer anything, that's okay. I'm just going to have thoughts, so we can have a discussion. That's the purpose of this.
Exactly. So first and foremost, you made a comment earlier about taking questions personally. Please, Mr. Dunn, as I mentioned to you all over the year I've been here, I appreciate the questions. I embrace the questions. Thank you for asking them. I know other members will probably have questions as well. If you have questions after today, continue to email me. More than happy to get you those responses, okay? So thank you, Mr. Dunn, for those questions. Couple clarifying things. First off, in regards to the staff and the first-year teacher, please send that along. Please keep in mind, though, is, you know, even though you saw some adjustments on there, these individuals still have a hard time making a living. Some of them have to give roommates, some of them have to give three roommates, and even then, they still have to work two or three jobs. We know that because they anecdotally are sharing that with us, and I'm sure our principals back here can also share it as well. So yes, there might be some variations to that, but I appreciate you sharing that because you're right, there is going to be variations. Not every individual is going to have student loans. Some of them might have roommates where it takes care of that. But the whole point of that slide is, is to show that our teachers are in need, they're not able to make a living, and we want to be able to be able to support that. So I appreciate that. I'll take a look, send that along, so we can take a look at that and break that down. No intent of causing any sort of distraction or adding additional fuel to our needs in regards to saying we're third from the bottom. We were tied, and sometimes when you're tied, you're still third from the bottom, second. That wasn't the intent. So I believe I want to make sure that I'm very clear on that. I want to be fully transparent with everything that we're presenting. Thank you for mentioning that, and I'll be more cognizant of that moving forward. So I appreciate that piece. Keep in mind, when we showed the state, is I wanted to be able to paint a picture in regards to what we're dealing with as a commonwealth. Because at the end of the day, whatever the state isn't able to provide us, it comes from the locality. And I will sit here and agree that there is some work to do, as well as my other superintendent colleagues. There's a lot of work we need to do in Richmond in regards to how we're funding public schools. So that was the only reason I was showing that. Absolutely, this is a great county, and absolutely, there's a lot of great things going on. I just wanted to be able to show that the state, there are some issues there.
30 seconds. But we're a county, and we are funding county dollars. That was why I made the comment on counties, is a county comparison versus the state.
Right. But the comparison is the LCI.
Okay.
And I can more than happy to share all 132 school divisions to see how we fare, because that is available on the state website as well. So if there's additional information there, more than happy to provide that. So I want to make sure that it wasn't, I wasn't sharing anything. It was shared, it was just in a different format. So I want to be very, very careful with that. In regards to Loudon, you know, fair enough, they are the, you know, the second richest. I thought they were the first, but I could be wrong. I know they're up there.
Last year they were. Fairfax is now.
But the point of us having the conversation there is, regardless if they're more richer than us, we're losing staff to them. So that is the whole intention that we focus on. Take them out, leave them into that average, that is where we lose a majority of our teachers to, and we want to be able to show that. And that's why I emphasize, every time I present that, not trying to catch them, I'm not trying to say we need to get to those salaries. I know that, and I know that will be a hefty price tag. I'm not recommending that. What I'm recommending is that we try to close that the best we can. But I appreciate that, because that's why we try to split that out, but totally understand that piece there. The VRS, as you mentioned, that's not an us thing. You know, it's definitely something I can talk with our board if they want us to lobby on that and talk with our delegates. We can talk through those pieces. Unfortunately, we have no control of that, but that's something if our board wants to do, we can definitely do that. I want to clarify some things with the vehicles and the mileage, and I really appreciate that. You actually asked this last year as well. Keep in mind that preliminarily, every staff member that travels not to and from home, but that travels from site to site gets reimbursed mileage. So if you have a teacher, say, is an ESAL teacher that goes, I'm making this up, goes from Millbrook to James Woods to Red Bud and then back to, they get compensated for that. There are some staff for our policy that if they are a emergency personnel and they do have to take the vehicle home, they get taxed on that. Okay? So if we did have reimbursement for all of our central office staff who are in buildings and they go from building to building, that is going to be more than what the cars that we have there. We can definitely go back and take a look at that. The other vehicles that are on there was since 2017, and as I mentioned to you all, we are a 2,500, 21-site operation. There are things that we have to do to spend money, and there are things that we have to do on a day-to-day. And I am here to tell you, Mr. Dunn, I want to make sure that we are good stewards of our dollar, and I want to make sure, for example, when we drive around, we make sure that we are utilizing the cars from site to site, and we are not taking them home. Okay? So I want to make sure that we're very clear on that, that we are being good stewards of our dollar. Yes, there are cars there. Our staff go from building to building. Some go to ten school buildings a day, because there's a lot of work that they do. Central office is designed to support our schools, which brings me to the next piece in regards to administrators. As I mentioned to you all.
Dr. Hummer. Just, I just want to clarify a point. Some of those vehicles, did you question the use of training on it, if I remember correctly? Some of them using them for training?
On training? It says facilities, it says staff travel. You can go through.
And the only reason I bring this up, I worked for the county for 26 years, I retired in 2014. The jail provided vehicles for staff to do training. I know personally, I went to Ohio, I went to Cincinnati, I went to Colorado. So we were providing vehicles for staff for training at the jail, and the sheriff's office does. And I also know the county employees that didn't work for the jail utilized the jail vehicles to do training as well. So if that is in fact what we do here, I mean, it's not that, not like the rest of the county doesn't do that as well, so.
And the only reason I bade the comment is, there's a cost there. There's also a cost on what happens if you used a person's own car. So if I'm a county employee, I use my own car and be reimbursed for that. Then there's a math analysis to see which is more effective or not. This is all occurring before Dr. Hummer was here, so it's not on his watch. His constituent brought the issue and made it so, and that's why I'm raising the issue for discussion. Go ahead.
That's fine, I just want to bring that point up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that. And again, thank you for the questions. And if there's room for improvement there, we want to do that. Absolutely, we want to do that. So two things when it comes to our building-level administrators. The first thing is, is they aren't part of our staffing standard. So we don't have one school that has more assistant principals than the other, or they have two principals, the other has one. So our staffing standards guides that. And quite honestly, we have some schools, one of them being Charando, that has 300 to 400 more students than the other high schools. There might be an argument, they might need another assistant principal, because that ratio is not supported at the state level. So that's the first thing there. The second thing is, our administrators are putting in 80 to 90 hours a week, minimum. They are on call in the weekends, their buildings are being used all day long. In the evenings, when I go to basketball games on Fridays, yes, I'm able to leave when the game's over at 9:30, but they're staying there until 12 o'clock at night, making sure that everybody leaves on time, counting money, doing all the things that they need to do. So our administrators work very, very hard, and they're just as important as everybody else. So I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that, because yes, they might make more money than the teacher does, but they also, and I don't want to ever staff against each other, ever want to do that. And that's why when we make these presentations, I don't want to compare classified to teachers, all of them are just as important. But when we talk about our administrators and reducing them, that is not only going to impact the functionality of that building, it's going to impact what we keep emphasizing, which is the overall performance of our students. Because they are the mayors of that school. They are the mayors of that community. I can only do so much as a superintendent. My job is to oversee them. So I just want to be very, very careful about that. I appreciate the question, and absolutely, we'll look into those things. But we are not overstaffed when it comes to administrators in our buildings, because we guide that by a staffing standard, and there are going to be some additional things we'll have to look at to add more staff.
Give me 30 seconds.
Please.
30 seconds to that. I've heard this for the last five or six years. You're a new superintendent.
Yes, sir.
You know that in the private sector, new CEOs come in, they say, fine, we're going to increase, decrease, et cetera. Like Amazon's getting rid of, you know, 2,500 people. Your job, on behalf of the taxpayer, the school board which hired you, is to get the best value for what you can do. And if your staff is the minimum staff right now to do the job, if you cut A, B, and C, here's the negative effects, then I'm not looking for a cut. If you have excess, there is. And so that's the purpose. I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but I am saying, take a good, hard look at it and then make the call. Thank you. Go ahead.
Absolutely. The other thing is, we do not have DEI administrators. So I don't know if that was before me, but I want to make sure our school board is clear enough, we do not have DEI administrators.
Two years ago, there were.
What is a DEI administrator?
Well, I know Dr. Angela's shaking his head, so.
So it's diversity, equity, inclusion?
So doctors.
We've never had a DEI administrator. We had two people whose role is their role. And like all of us, we are also put in charge of certain initiatives or put in charge of certain committees as an extra thing that we have to do, and that was those two.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear and loud, there has never been a DEI coordinator, ever, in the history of Frederick County public schools. I just want to make that loud and clear.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Yes, and that was, I think I addressed all of your questions. If there is anything additional that I missed, you know how they're going to hold me, more than happy to answer those questions. So thank you, sir.
Okay.
May I have 30 seconds? May I ask a question? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to address some of the comments that Mr. Dunn has made. First, I wouldn't think we should compare ourselves to Amazon or any of the regular businesses, if you will, because they're not dealing with children. Second, I want to reiterate what Dr. Hummer was saying with the overcrowdedness in our high schools and middle schools and elementary schools. Not so much the middle school now, but our elementary schools. The same number of administrators that are within the realm of what their numbers should be are dealing with well over the numbers of what they should be dealing with. And I agree with Dr. Hummer that perhaps those schools, until we can figure out how we're going to either expand in Millbrook, like you had mentioned, or build a fourth high school, whatever the decision finally becomes, that we don't talk about cutting administration or even teaching staff at this point. And if I can back up to a couple of your other slides, I agree with you. I think we should take a look and see how Frederick County rates in the country. I think that's a much better view of what we should all be looking at, as opposed to having Loudon and Fairfax skew those numbers. But I dare say that if you look at those numbers that you've listed for a new teacher and what the rents are, the taxes and so forth, you're going to be hard-pressed to find too many teachers not having student loans. And you're also going, you have families that come here. A lot of our teachers that come, especially from Pennsylvania schools, Pennsylvania universities, they're either doing their initial teaching in Pennsylvania and then moving, or there's a lot of families that would like to move in this area, especially from Loudon. We could get folks from Loudon to come here, that would be even better. You also mentioned that, let me find it in my notes, I apologize.
Hey, take it, take it, Don.
Oh. You had said something about how we are within the realm of most of the other schools that are below average, as far as teacher pay is concerned, below the state average or below the country average. I don't remember. Dr. Hummer?
Of the seven counties. Of the seven counties, in year zero, I don't have this thing in front of me, we might have been six out of the seven.
Six out of the seven.
And then year five, we were again, five or six out of the seven. We got up to years 20, 25, 30, we're in the three to four.
Okay.
And I'll be glad to share those, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'm not trying to make it sound like, I promise. But the question I have for all of us to consider is, do we want to be below average as a county? Do we want to rise up above or at least even out with, and I'm not including Loudon or Fairfax, but at least in the 30-mile radius, to ensure that we're being not only competitive, but also providing the best possible quality teacher that we can?
Can I make a quick comment to you, Mr. Dunn?
Absolutely.
When you take out Loudon, a couple of years ago, of the remaining seven, we were basically in the three to four. So we were basically in the middle of that. When you take any of those others, each one of the counties, Falk here, Clark, Warren, et cetera, are all below average because of Loudon. And Falk here, at two data points, I forget which, is above, but again, over the total curve, they're below. So when Dr. Hummer says, we are below average, all the others are also below average as well, you remove Loudon, and then two years ago, when I was looking at this data, we were basically three to four. Now, you're basically five to six, four, zero through 10 or 10. Go ahead.
I understand what you're saying. Thank you. The only other thing that I would argue to look at is that, with regards to teacher salaries, at year 15 of a teacher, they're, and I'm well beyond that, but at year 15, that's about when their children are starting to, they're starting to look at colleges and universities, and the expenses that they're going to have are going to increase drastically, depending on how many children they have and how many plan to go to college, university, or to a trade school. Because it's all expensive. So I would argue that, you know, starting at year 15 especially, we need to really be as competitive as we possibly can, because when teachers are looking, they're not looking the short term, they're looking at the long term. You know, they want to come to a place, and this is where they want to live and retire, and, you know, hopefully not move to Florida. But I'm just, I just want that to be a consideration as well, to look and not just see numbers, but see what's happening in these teachers' lives at these particular benchmarks. Lastly, if I'm not going too long...
Go ahead, this is, we're having a work session.
You're meeting, so you keep going.
All right, I'm going to filibuster. All right, here we go. This is something that's near and dear to my heart. It is the, it's the food program of breakfast and lunch for all of our students. I don't have the exact data in front of me. I know they did a 2011 study, breaking out the counties, and showing what the food insecurity rate was for people in Frederick County. And we were at a, sort of, I think we were at a five percent rate, out of all the counties. And in 2017, another study was done where we were eight percent, so it's increasing. I know, I work in Clark County as a teacher, and I can just give you some information about what I see on a day-to-day basis, as far as a child who you know is not eating properly at home, not getting enough food to eat, and then coming to school, and becoming one of the largest behavioral problems in the school. And then it sort of spiraled down from there, because if we look long-term, I understand why you think that it's not the taxpayer's responsibility to feed the students here, but I argue that it is. And I argue that it is simply because we want an educated population, and for them to be educated, they shouldn't have to worry about where their next meal is coming from. I have students that don't eat anything on Saturdays and Sundays. We put paper bags filled with food for a number of families, but not everyone's serviced by it. I'm sure it's the same here in Frederick. But the bottom line is, if a child is going hungry day-to-day, their behavior and their well-being is not going to be very positive in the school, and it's going to cause a problem for the teachers in that moment, but then further down, it's also going to cause problems, because they'll be in trouble with the law. You know, they'll be not a productive citizen of our county, and they'll end up costing more by being in the prison system. And I don't have numbers, and, you know, this is just, to me, it's common sense, and I'm not, I don't mean any disrespect to anyone up here, I'm just saying, this, as a teacher, based on what I see, and in thirty years of what I've seen, this year and last year have been the worst that I've ever seen.
And quick thirty-second comment? We can have another conversation offline in more depth.
Absolutely.
But there are federal programs designed for that.
You're absolutely right.
And so if you have a child that's not eating for the weekend, I agree with you one hundred percent. And I know that there are churches that provide food, I know there are programs, and those people need to do that, and if those federal programs do not meet the need, then I'm going to say, let's find a solution that works. By the same token, there are plenty of children to go to school, which their parents can easily afford to have, give them breakfast and lunch, and so for me, that's a way, so I'm not going to delay that, you know, other people.
No, and I absolutely agree with you on everything you've said.
And we agree probably, and let's feed those that are hungry. I just don't think it's the school program to feed, I don't think it's appropriate, I think there are other options. You can disagree, and that's for a healthy debate, so.
Sure. And I just want to add that there are, you know, there are two things. You've got those that don't qualify for those federal programs, but are living paycheck to paycheck, and can't always afford the proper amount of food. They go to food, to the Family Dollar, to the Dollar Tree, and I guarantee you're not going to find fresh vegetables at the Dollar Tree. And then, there was one other point I was going to make, but it's escaped me, so I've talked enough, I apologize.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So, more supervisors with comments? I guess I would say, take advantage, if you can, with the fact that we can post these and follow up at future meetings, or by email. On the other hand, if there's something that really can be resolved best face-to-face today, go right ahead and take the time. Who would, I'll start at the unsupervised here.
Go for it.
Once again, Dr. Hummer, thanks for coming and giving our presentation today and taking our questions. First question, I just have a couple of questions, hopefully they'll be quick. I'm trying to narrow in on the student enrollment projections over the next couple of years, and I know that's a moving target. I get it. I have very good play before that, how division-wide, that that can change twenty-five to thirty per week. I've seen the data that you have this year, where on Friday the fifth, I think, of January, and Friday the twelfth, there was a difference of twenty-seven students in one week's time. So I understand that. However, looking at page thirty-six of your current budget, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, has, shows that our twenty-three, twenty-four enrollment, at least, I guess at the start of the year was a projection, was fourteen thousand, twenty-four. It shows a slight increase for twenty, as a projection for twenty-four, twenty-five, and then it shows some slight decreases, and again, this was a year-old document, slight decreases for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, down to about thirteen thousand, eighty, seventy-nine, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And my question would be, do we have updated data on that, knowing that, I have a pretty good feel that there's three to four thousand housing starts, you know, moving dirt in Frederick County right now, and there's more folks on the way, so do you have a current projection on that?
Yeah, I'm not, what document are you referencing there?
I'm referencing the school budget for twenty-three, twenty-four.
So there was a new conversation that we had after I started, that has new projections, and I will make a note to send that to you. This is a document that we've already shared with the board of supervisors, I'll give that to Mr. Bohr for share with all of you. Our numbers are going up, and in tenure spend, there's a slight dip, but then it goes back up, and I will, there's a whole presentation and a document I can share with you.
Appreciate it.
More than happy to do that.
Two other quick questions for you.
Yes, sir.
I seem to remember, a couple of years ago, that there was some talk of, and I'm on the topic of attracting new teachers, that there was a scholarship opportunity for students who were going to go away to college for four years, to come back and have some of their tuition paid for. Can you, I didn't see that mentioned in the budget, can you address that? Is that a program that we have?
Correct, yes, so we do have that. We're also looking at starting a lab school here in Frederick County, in partnership with Laurel Ridge and Germana, as well as some other local school divisions, where we will actually, the program, not us, the program pays for students to get their two-year associate's degree, junior and senior year. It pays for them to go to James Madison University for two years, they graduate early, and then we can hire them. That's something that we're looking to start in FY twenty-six. It's, we're in the preliminary stages of that, but again, a new way for us to attract new teachers. We also have Teachers for Tomorrow program in our schools, where we provide students with opportunities to get access to teaching while they're here with us, to hopefully have aspirations of coming back. And then we also have the program that you mentioned with James Madison as well. So that's still there, it's not being cut, we're still moving forward with that.
Okay, thank you. And one last question on the substitutes, I noticed that you're proposing a pay raise for the subs. Seventy unfilled positions per day, that's pretty huge, that's almost like a whole school per day that's unfilled. My question would be, beyond the, beyond the pay increase, unfortunately, there's only so many folks out in the community our size that are on the sub list, that are going to sub daily. The question I would have is, have you all looked at ways of reducing those number of absences? And one suggestion I'd have to look at is, I was also an educator for a long period of time, I think it took me about fifteen years or so in my career to get to the point where I had so much excess leave that I was getting a check every summer for the excess leave. The question would be, is there a way to do that yearly for staff? Because if you've got somebody that's teaching two or three years, they're looking down, I'm going to get, start getting paid ten years from now for my excess leave, that's not a very good incentive, but if they can get that, if they can get that check every year, if they choose to do so, if they can get that extra check, so they're getting, what, ten or eleven sick days per year, and if they don't have any sick days, they get a pretty decent check, but they can get it that year, just an opinion that that would be helpful, if we could do that.
I'm really glad you brought that up. I'm going to go back to when we were talking about the needs-based budget, how we were developing this, and we had conversations with our staff, and I was in numerous meetings to say, everything is on the table, let's take a look at everything. There have been numerous concerns that have been brought forward by our principals, because they are, as you mentioned, unable to fill, and it's not like a, we're changing oil in a car, and just this car doesn't get its oil changed for today. You have to watch over that class, somebody has to be in there, and sometimes it's our principals that have to watch over those classes. We have teachers that are missing out on their planning time, like, there's a lot, as you know, as a freeze administrator, there's a lot that happens there. So one of the items that was actually on, up for consideration, was to come up with some attendance-type bonus of exactly like you're talking about, of paying out leave. Unfortunately, it wasn't anything that made it to the top of our list because of all the other things you saw in here, however, it's not crossed off the list, it's something that we're hopeful to look forward to in future years, because you're exactly right, because that was one of the conversations we had with our principals, is, let's not focus so much on the subs, let's focus on our teachers. But we also want to make sure that our teachers, they have a right to miss. There's things that come up, they have doctor's appointments, they have families, they have things that happen, but if there is things that come up where they need to miss, maybe there's some incentives to say, do you really have to do that on Thursday, is that something you can do on Saturday, and by the way, we'll pay you out for that leave at the end? We're always thinking through those things. So I'm glad you mentioned that, because we're actually talking about that as well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
That's all, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Did you have questions also? I saw your hand up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
Dr. Hummer, what I'd like to hear or see is the total number of trailers that are in the school system. I know, I'm personally guilty of roughing Shorando constantly with sixteen, but I also know there are a lot more than that. So I think we need to point out, because at the end of the, and thank you for sharing this, this is early for us, I'm the newbie on the block, so this is early for us, and I really appreciate that. I know what I'm going to be doing now for the next six days, or three, morning, noon, and night, but the conversation, we have got to have this honest conversation between the board of supervisors and the school board about the growth and what we do to help. And that's got to be part of this, and it's going to cost money. So I think that's something we really need to know about, and I think it goes into the security aspect that you pointed out with your security officer, I mean, you're talking a hundred thousand dollars for interior locked doors. Interior locked doors are great for in the building, but they're not great for a trailer. So I think that we really need to have that part of the discussion as well, and then I'll have one more question to value to read this night. So, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I just add something, or ask actually a clarification? Dr. Hummer, the dome-like Epcot Center things that we have in two of our schools, are they included in the trailers? I'm not sure if you know what I'm talking about.
The dome, no.
The armor, red, black.
Yeah.
The front stretch.
Oh, oh, yeah, armor and red.
Aren't they considered, I mean, they're not trailers, but wouldn't they also be considered the same type of thing? Isn't that what their purpose is for?
Yeah.
And I've heard, I've heard sort of, I just want to make sure that they're included in that number, because they're quite nightmarish, according to the principals I've spoken with at the academy, so we can include that. Thank you.
So before we move on, I just want to clarify something, because it's been back and forth so many times for me. I toured Millbrook last summer, late spring, and I believe now there are not sixteen trailers, there are eight trailers there, sixteen classrooms.
Shorando.
Shorando.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sixteen classrooms, but eight trailers, right? Just so we all get on the same page, is that correct?
Sure, yes, I think that's, yes, if that's the number we initially gave you, but I'll send you guys the total number for all of our schools.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman. I thought, in this response to you, I thought there were sixteen trailers at Shorando, and my, maybe somebody put a wrong map there, but my impression was there was sixteen for this year, with about twenty.
So, if we could just, if I could make, please, Mr. Chairs, if I could make a recommendation, I did send that number to you all, whatever that number one is accurate, I will reshare it with you, because again, I don't have it here in front of me, and I don't want to misquote anybody, and I want to make sure that we get a clear number. I will send that to you all. If that was the number I sent with you, then that's that. So whatever number I sent you is accurate, we'll just say that, and I'll reshare it with you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair? I'm with Dr. Hummer, when you clarify that, okay, it could be eight buildings, I don't care, but sixteen buildings, the point is, there are sixteen classrooms, that's what I want to hear. I want to hear, how many classrooms are outside of that building, on those campuses throughout Frederick County? That's what I want to hear.
We can get that for you.
Thanks, sir.
Chairman, if I may, ask a question?
Let me just ask real quick, because we do need to give the school board a chance to ask questions as well, just one second if I may, or, I just want to take a poll before I let her go. Are there any more people with questions who haven't asked yet among the supervisors? No? Okay, let's pass it over to the school board.
Vice Chair Klein, head up.
And teachers, if I may.
You recognize the school board members.
Vice Chair, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Just, Dr. Hummer, just a few clarifying questions. On the finance committee meeting presentation from Monday the fifth, this has to do with the teachers and when they leave us. I have in those notes, it's on slide number four, it says thirty-seven percent of our teachers, or a total of sixty-three teachers left last year, with zero to five years' experience. And then, in several presentations, and also newspaper articles and so forth, we keep harping on the fifteen-year point when they leave us. So which one is it? Do we have a mass quantity leaving at zero to five, and then another quantity leaving at fifteen, or do we just have mostly statistically over the past, let's call it five years, have teachers leave at the zero to five-year point? Can you clarify that for me?
She, she, um...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so Mrs. Klein, what you were seeing...
Is that Mrs. Camery?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mrs. Klein, sorry.
Hi.
To answer your question, when we gave you the largest number, zero to five, at thirty-seven percent, that, or the sixty, I think it was thirty-seven percent was the highest, what we didn't do is give you fifteen up, because that was the largest group, and we were doing it by five-year increments. But if you look at fifteen and above, that percentage was close to like thirty-four percent, so it was pretty close. But you had asked for the highest, so that's why the zero to five.
Okay, thank you very much. It does, yes, ma'am, thank you. And also too, going back to our current presentation that we're all looking at, on slide fifty-nine, touching on the CEP, and Mrs. Camery, this might be a question towards you as well. The two-point-two million, I just want to make it clear to everyone in the room, that two-point-two million is a sunk cost, meaning, we will not receive any portion of that back in any type of reimbursement. What we will receive back in federal reimbursement is the dollar cost, a percentage of the dollar cost of the at-cost value of that lunch or breakfast, that's given to a student from the federal government. However, the two-point-two million is a sunk cost. Am I correct in saying that?
You're correct.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Are there any other comments on the school members? Mr. Agnes?
All right, so I've got a couple of things, I just kind of want to address some stuff that Mr. Dunn had brought up, and then some stuff I agree and disagree with. I one hundred percent agree with you, the trailers, the trailer situation throughout the county is just terrible. We've got to find a better spot to educate these children at, and to your point, Mr. Jewel, is it's a security issue, and I do safety for a living, and it's a bad spot to have them, you know? It's an easy target, it's a bad choke point. One of the things I don't agree with you on is getting rid of Loudon County, and as far as your numbers. And the reason I say that is, with the counties that we're comparing to the seven counties, when you look at why teachers are leaving, and where they're leaving to, when they tell us where they're leaving to, the three big culvers that we're getting, it isn't Clark County, Warren County, Shandell County, Prince William, Falkir, and of course Loudon. And a lot of them do go to Loudon County because of the IRS, and trying to make those top three years, so they have a greater retirement. I totally understand that. But trying to bring back those teachers, and trying to keep teachers, and retain those teachers, if we can have them build roots within the community, give them a little bit more maybe at the hump, at the fifteen-year mark, and then kind of let it die off a little bit, and kind of let it mellow out, I think that by then they'll have roots in the community, and they'll want to stay like Mr. Lero, and retire out, you know? So I don't, like, if we're talking about numbers here, we can't exclude any numbers either. So for that, I've learned, you know, keep Loudon in there. I don't disagree with you at all about the staff travel, I think that is something we do need to look at. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I want that information as well, you know, helping make decisions as well. When it comes to the CEP, that one, I don't disagree with you at all, there are federal programs out there, there are bright futures, something else that we have, and our students aren't going to go hungry. I understand on the weekends, there's other things out there, federal programs to help out those parents and those families, there's, like you said, churches, I understand not everybody out here's religious, and may be a little bit shy, or maybe too proud to go out and see that. But to Mr. Bell's point, when we look at some of the disciplinary issues that we have in schools, right, one we can call is those hungry kids, or distracted kids in learning, for that, I'm still kicking that one around in my head, on the positives and negatives, but I do agree, it shouldn't be on the taxpayer, the local taxpayer, to do that, you know, because there are federal dollars out there to do that. For that, I'm still kicking that one around in my head, on the positives and negatives. But I do agree, it shouldn't be on the taxpayer, the local taxpayer, to do that, you know? Because there are federal dollars out there to do that. Maybe a phase-in approach might be a little bit more powerful, I don't know. I'm still looking at that myself. And then, and to Mr. Leroy's point, one of the, those student projections we did put out, when we did the truncated rezoning, we took a look at a lot of that stuff, and we had to provide that to you. And like you and I talked before the meeting, I'd be happy to sit down and walk you through that one. I know you're getting a lot of fire at you right off the bat here. But yeah, I'd be happy to hug you down and talk with you about that. That's it for me.
So Chairman, sir, then if I can jump in. I didn't get to ask my questions, but I wanted everyone else to do that first, maybe one of mine. I have only a few to zero. After you, I'll ask yours. But I wanted to jump in on that one subject, so that I agree with Supervisor Dunn, that I want to see the numbers both ways. There are a few charts I would like to ask for them to be run with, that you run with Loudoun and also run it without Loudoun, because there's two purposes. One is, yes, that's the county whose deals are staff, that we lose them to more than any other probably. But on the other hand, we also need to know as a board how we compare with the counties around us. And so I'd like, I'll send you a list of charts, if you don't mind, that we'd like to see.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then if you want to continue with the school board questions.
Any other members now?
No questions, just kind of statements and rebuttals. I would argue that it's nice, it's wonderful, and it's important to have perspective about taking Loudoun out or adding West Virginia in onto the numbers. But the reality is, we are losing our teachers to Loudoun. There's no other way to spin it. So that is our reality, and that will not change, no matter how much data we have, that is an absolute, pretty much. It is also an absolute that it's going to be very difficult for us to catch up to Loudoun, and we may never do that. But that doesn't mean that we don't have work to do, and that doesn't mean that our educators here don't deserve fair compensation. On the topic of the 2.2 million dollars for, to feed children in schools, again, think of a better way to spend money. I can tell you a little, a story of a little girl who had two other school-aged children in her home. Her mother was disabled from her job as police dispatcher from working so much on the computer. Her father had just lost his business, that was a family business, and her mother had liquidated her retirement funds to pay for, to try and save the business. Ultimately, it failed, and it didn't happen. And those three school-aged children were left on a lower salary than they were much used to. Only one person was providing a worker's compensation salary to those three school-aged children. Those school-aged children got to eat every day, breakfast and lunch for many months because of a program that fed them. And that little girl was me. I benefited this, and here I am, sitting at the table advocating for students. This is one reason why I have such a passion for education. And if you break it down very rudimentarily, 2.2 million divided by 14,000 students, divided by two meals a day, divided by 180 days, is generally what we have. We often don't, those 180 days are built in, right? We have snow days. It boils down to 40 cents a meal for each child. We do know that not all children will take advantage of that for whatever reason. But those can also go into salaries and things that we need to store food and produce food and things like that. So I knocked on over 2,000 doors when I was doing my campaign, and I talked to well over 2,000 constituents in the Red Bud District. And I don't know of any constituent that would argue against 40 cents for a meal for a child. So I strongly advocate and hope you guys will consider that point. I think that that's all I have, so I ask you guys to consider those points. I do have in growth, we have had trailers at Charando for over half a century. The growth has been here for well over 25 years. It's not going anywhere. We have six developments in the county and maybe more. We can come up with creative solutions to finance this, but ultimately, that's not the school board's responsibility to come up with the solutions. We spend the money for these. We know where they need to go. We know how it needs to be divided. And we have a very transparent leader that is showing us the way, is being a good steward of our dollars, and has provided everything that the board has asked for. So I ask you to consider fully funding our schools for our children. There's no better investment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I know we've heard from three and soon to be four of the board of supervisors, but I would urge you that if there's any part of this budget that you don't understand or don't agree with or would like more information about, to please reach out to Dr. Hummer or reach out to one of us, and we share everything. There's no secrets in between us, because we can't help fix the problem if we don't know that it's a problem for you, and then when it comes to a vote and you vote against it, we wonder why you didn't bring whatever it is that you voted against to our attention. So I would ask that you do that, so that we can be good stewards of the county and of the constituents. Thank you.
Any other comments? I just, one thing here, I'm new at this, so some of you are a lot more experienced at it than I have, ever thought I would be. I'm kind of in a unique position here, because I'm listening, I'm listening to all the budget presentations. I spent 26 years working for Frederick County at the regional jail, and I've spent the last almost 10 years at another jail in another location. So I've been able to see some of these things, and I can tell you for a fact, it's not just the schools that are losing people to Loudoun County, it is the law enforcement in the other areas that are losing people to Loudoun County. I spoke to one officer that used to work for me here at the jail years ago, just over the summer when I was campaigning, and he was leaving the Northwestern Regional Adult Detention Center for Loudoun County because they were starting him at $88,000 a year. He was getting almost $40,000 more than he was making here, just him. So, and the same thing happens at the other jail that I work at in another county. We pay very well, they pay me very well, but I also know for a fact, we're losing people left and right to Loudoun County. So it's not just the schools, it's everybody. It's going to be hard to compete with Loudoun County when they're starting people out at 80,000, up to 105,000. And that's just the way it is. But just something to think about. I've looked at some of the things, and I do believe that we need to make sure that our teachers are taken care of. As being in law enforcement, and then this is where my unique perspective comes in, I've been a general instructor now since the late 90s, teaching at several of the police academies here in Middletown, Prince William County, other places. And the reason that I'm kind of advocating for the teachers' raise is we need to get the brightest and the best that we can get here. You would be amazed, I was a supervisor at this jail for 25 years, you would be amazed at the number of people that, when they would write their incident reports, could not write a complete sentence, didn't know how to punctuate. And I have copies of reports, if I gave them to you, it would blow your mind. As an instructor in the police academy, teaching basic jail students, you'd be amazed at the number of students that can't read, you'd be amazed at the number of students that have difficulty writing, difficulty taking tests. And I understand that's nationwide, our school systems have let our kids down over the last 40 years, that's a fact. But that's why I think I would like to advocate for our teachers. And I understand budget issues, and I know we have to work through these things, but I'd really like to see that we give our teachers the money that they need, so that we can get the best and the brightest to help our students along, so that they have a fighting chance. And that's pretty much all the comments that I had to make.
Thank you, Chairman.
And thank you so much for allowing us to be here today, because it's been.
I had one or two questions I skipped over myself. If I may, would you like a question? Ahead of me, please, go ahead.
I was about to say something. I would like to advocate for the classified employees. They need to be bumped up. They truly do. You talk about cost of living and not being able to meet their needs, and that's one of the reasons that we're losing a lot of them. And they're very dedicated, they love the children, the bus drivers love what they do. The nutritionists love what they do, they love kids, but they can't work for nothing. And the other thing that I would like to say is that the trailers, they've got to go. It's one thing to have a few trailers for a few years, but for the length of time that we've had them, that's wrong. That's a stigma for our county to say that we've had them for that long and not been able to come up with a solution.
Thank you. Yeah, on the trailers, I know at Millbrook, I've always been at Charando, I'd be a little frustrated, we have some unused space in that school that's parked and wrecked, and we haven't gotten wrestled around that. If that had been classrooms, it's at least four, maybe more, that it would make. So if that could have been done, maybe we wouldn't have needed trailers all these years, or at least not near as many of years as we've had them. I had a question or two on slide 52 of your salary initiative. This is with regard to the 1% pay raise, that we have roughly state matching funds, not quite matching. The question is, is that a permanent state matching if we take that? How long would that matching last?
Great question. So the governor, in the first year of his biennium, added a 1% one-time bonus. The second year of his biennium is a 2% that would be added into the operating dollars. So that, now again, this hasn't been approved yet, so the General Assembly can add it, take it away, what have you. So we want to be cognizant of that, so that is why it's just a 1% bonus, because if we added it into the salaries, we would be behind 1% next year, if that makes sense. Because we're not getting that again next year, so that's why it's a one-time bonus.
So our board has to be careful that we sign up for something, you know, that looks good in the short term, and then we have to cover that difference unless we want all those salaries back down, which is very unlikely.
But we're not doing that, that's our point. It's a one-time bonus, it's not worked into their salaries. What's going to happen is, is we're working, again, if it's approved, they will get a separate check in either November, December, closer to the holidays, again, talking about incentives, and it's a separate check, not built into their salaries. So that's why we're doing that, so that we're not bound to that 1% next year, if that makes sense.
Thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely, great question.
And then I had a question on all the things in your budget, it's related to this question. How many of those are continuation of things that were initiated using COVID-era funds? So state and federal dollars flow to counties everywhere, and we took advantage of those to get some things done and initiate some programs, but we knew when we did so as a board that they didn't last forever. So I'd like to be careful to identify which programs are new to the taxpayer, even if they're not new to the school system as an obligation. And maybe we need to do that offline, I can email you, so we can sort that out.
Yeah, so I wasn't here when the COVID dollars were pouring in, but I can share with you from experience also what they shared with me here, is that a lot of school divisions were very cognizant of that, so they didn't hit a cliff, that's why we did not purchase positions, that's why we didn't add salaries, because when we got to this point, not only would we be looking at an $8 million ask, you might be looking at a $20 million ask because of all the other items that were paid with federal dollars. So we were very cognizant here in Frederick County to avoid those types of issues, so there aren't going to be any additional dollars, that cliff is not going to impact us. And there are some other school divisions, Mr. Ludwig, that did that, and they're already behind because they had to build that into this upcoming budget year as well as the next, so they didn't take ahead when they did that. So right now, we are in good shape with that. Great question.
Thank you. I have a few more, but they're in the weeds, so I might email them after I think about them.
Whichever, whichever you desire.
And then I see Supervisor Dunn wants to ask a question, but before he does, Mr. Chairman, everyone's had a chance to speak, I don't mind, I just want to check with you and your board's patience and schedule, we appreciate you being here, so we can allow some go-back questions from both boards, but if that's all right with you.
If that's fine.
Is that good with everyone? Very good, Supervisor Dunn.
Let me just talk about Loudoun County. I understand that Dr. Hummer has people that go to Loudoun County. A few years ago, there was a person in Frederick County, a teacher, had been here for 27 years, and she left. Deep roots in Frederick County, left for the last three years because you get paid for the highest three years. I believe it's the highest three, not the average. So if I get to go to Frederick County, to Loudoun County for the highest three years, I'll make that commute all day long. I saw roots here, I'm paying a lower tax rate here than Loudoun County, and how do you address that? This is not going to be solved today. But if we can go and get the General Assembly to go and take a look at a defined contribution plan versus a defined benefit plan, that's one thought. Or if you go and say that if you're a teacher, you get paid for the average of all 30 years that you're here, that then dissipates that significantly. That's going to take some effort by all of us to go and change the law. But you can change the law, you lay out, sit down with your local delegation, make the case for it. I fully understand that those people, there were lots of people who say, no, I'm going to teach for 26 years, you can do phase-ins, but that's a way to try to address that issue. Loudoun County won't go away, but I'd say to each of you, do you really care for your spouses, if you're married, I'm being sarcastic? Because Bill Gates can out-fund any of you or any of us. So you do what you can do. But the people that are here in Frederick County that work in Loudoun County are working, living here because of the lower tax rate. They don't go to Loudoun County because houses are more expensive and tax rates are more expensive. So they get in both, the best world, the best of both worlds. My thought process is, how do you neutralize that to some degree? It's not going to be perfect, but if there's a way to try and neutralize that, that's helpful. Number two, we are also competing with everybody but Loudoun County, meaning Dr. Hummer says, I want to go hire a science teacher, math teacher, et cetera. And that science teacher or math teacher could say, I can go to Falkir, or Clark, or Warren, or Winchester City. So you're also competing with them. So even though you're going to lose some to Loudoun, you're also going to compete with the locals, and if we can go and show where we are in relationship to those other entities, then we have a shot at that. So it's just a thought, you know, to you on that issue. And West Virginia is also competing with us. Hi, I live in Berkeley, I want to hire somebody, and those guys in Frederick County are keeping up their salaries, but the guy we wanted to hire now goes to Frederick County. So that's kind of the dynamics, and if collectively, we can kind of work this through, I know that Loudoun County is not going to go away, but if there's other ways to try to address this, then I'm just throwing a thought from the table. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Oh, sorry, I want another quick comment. Mr. Bell, for the 15-year mark, I would encourage all teachers, you can run 529 plans for your kids.
Oh.
And so therefore, okay, so therefore I'm saying, you know, when you're married and have your first child or two, and Dr. Hummer, you could throw it to your teachers, consider 529 plans as a way to go and get parents to start saving for college. I understand your 15-year mark comment, but it's another way to try to address the issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ludwig, I would really encourage you to share the questions that you had, regardless of whether they're in the weeds. It has been very difficult in the past for the boards to get together and be so civil with each other. I have two small children, I work in an emergency department all day, so I would really ask you to be respectful of our board's time, I think we are all full-time workers here, and pose those questions to us now.
So my computer has run out of power, but I'll do the best I can. I had a question about the LCI calculation. I suspect that it might be treating us unfairly, it's nothing we can control in a couple of respects, and I'd have to recover that to see. One of them would be, if inflation is really higher than factored into the formula, then we might seem to be richer than we are with respect to actual costs of living for teachers and everyone else in that calculation, but I want to think through that further and look at the formula, how the state did that. If it's true, one sign of that might be that most counties or all counties also suffer the same impact, they all seem richer than they did a year ago. So it was statistics like that, I'd be happy to forward those questions so that you all see them. See if I can think of any others.
Why didn't you come up with your statistic figures, Mr. Ludwig?
You know, I was just looking at the description of how the LCI is calculated, and inflation has got to be a part of that calculation, so I wanted to go through that formula.
Sure, I was curious to what numbers, what numbers of inflation?
Sure, I was curious to what numbers, what numbers of inflation, what percent do you have in your figures?
So I don't have a favorite inflation index to use. The question is, there's a lot, there's a lot of debate in society now about whether we're measuring, inflation isn't unusual for the last 20 years. So the question is, are we measuring it correctly and are we being impacted as in the school system by an inappropriately low inflation mark and therefore funds are being taken away from us? So I'm an engineer, I like to look at all the formulas, I haven't had time to do so, so I'd like to...
Are you, are you able to name the formulas?
No.
Okay.
Well, the LCI calculation and a few others, yes. Are there any other go-bangs? If not, I have one comment and I'll pass it to the school board chairman to close. Any other?
This isn't a go-back, but just a question. You said that the, Mr. Bullhopper, you said that this is being recorded audio. Will this audio be available to the general public?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, so I'd just like to say thank you, board members and school staff. We greatly appreciate getting this data. The few years I've been here and the additional years that I did go back and research, we got budgets usually in the end that were smaller than this. This year, we're getting something this big, that's a good sign that we're getting a lot of data and to investigate. And I think we have plenty of time before the end of that schedule that you showed that we can resolve most, if not all, of our questions and have a really well-informed budget and budget decision this year. So again, thank you very much for your openness and your questions from the school board as well. Chairman, would you like to adjourn us or add anything from your end?
Just again, thank you so much for your time, thank you all for being here and working with you and looking for your help and guidance and... But again, appreciate you all for allowing us to be here today. So with that said, if there are no other comments, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, duly seconded. Is there any discussion? Then I move that we are adjourned.
You told me at the beginning of the session, we have a motion. We've got one order. Do we have a motion?
Sorry, I did. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
And do we need to do that as well?
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, we do. Do we have a motion from the supervisors to adjourn?
Make a motion, let's you adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.